Looking out for the session tonight?
I don't think so.
Nothing on there? All right. I'd like to call the January 13th Committee of the Whole Finance Meeting for order at 6:01 PM. Start with roll call. Carl Johnson here, Jerry Gieske.
Here.
Jonathan Van Laar.
Here.
Dave Wiltse.
Here.
Ray Larson. Steve Shabacher.
Here.
Ryan Curry.
Here.
Tom Wahlberg. Mr. Wahlberg texted said he'll be running a little bit late. Bill Robertson.
Here.
Rodney Riley.
Here.
Freddie De La Trinidad.
Here.
Okay, next, I believe we all received an email from Ms. Bartelt asking that she could join remotely due to illness. I would accept a motion to do so. Motion by Mr. Riley, second by Mr. Shabacher. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Bartelt, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. Hope you feel better soon. I have you in here. Next, I accept a motion to approve the January 6th Committee of the Whole Administrative Meeting Minutes and the County of the Whole Administrative Executive Session Minutes from January 6, 2022. Motion by Mr. Shabacher, seconded by Mr. Riley. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Let the record state that Mr. Larson has arrived at 6:02. Any emails for public comment? The audience, they would like to offer any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Gieske, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Sherman.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Mr. Robertson, seconded by Mr. Shabacher. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Ms. Gieske. Oh, you can have it.
Thank you. I was rocking on. Let's go right into 6.1, the Treasurers. Mr. Newport. I think you have a new hairdo. Nobody but noticed it but me.
Five dollars didn't go to waste. Good to know.
I'll have to find out where the five dollars is. So I don't have to keep.
Good evening, everyone. Looking at the cash investment summary, and I warned you a month ago that December was going to be an expensive month with three paychecks and other factors. It was not as expensive as I predicted because the $800,000 insurance bill that we normally pay in December, we didn't get the invoice until late December. So that is on your claims list that you'll be approving later this evening. So it'll be paid in January, which makes January an expensive month. But the, you know, cash balances of the general fund down about 1.3 million. Other than that, not much news. We did, we did have a CD that matured in December, and I was able to reinvest it for two years at a rate of 0.55%, which I think is really good in this market. So when we spend the money, the money that we've been spending is coming out of the IMET convenience fund, which doesn't yield nearly as well. It's yielding, I think, 0.1 and something in that neighborhood of 0.1. So, you know, liquidity aspect of the pool continues to dwindle, which is fine. My normal benchmark for liquidity is 10%. And we've got still over nine and a half million of the 28 million in the pool that's in liquid accounts. So I expect that to continue. When we need cash, it'll come out of that IMET convenience fund. I really don't have anything else to mention in terms of the finance report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Someone have any questions for Kurt? Jerry, any questions for Kurt? Okay, did you want to go to your second topic? Talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I did mention last month that I was concerned about inflation because of the PTEL law, tax cap law, the way it's written. So the background of PTEL, Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, has now been with us for 30 years. Was first passed by the legislature applying to Cook and the Cowler Counties in 1991. Then Boone County approved a PTEL via referendum in 1996. One of the provisions in the law is that it allows the property tax extension, the dollars that a district can receive. It can go up according to inflation, the Consumer Price Index of the previous year. But there's a limit on that. It's, the limit is 5%. So if inflation is more than 5%, that tends to put the squeeze on governments as their costs increase with inflation. But they aren't allowed to increase their property tax revenue the same amount. And that is where we're at. Just a couple of days ago, federal government released their statistics. Inflation of the Consumer Price Index for 2021 was 7.0%. You know, we, looking ahead to this December, when you, or, you know, November, when you're looking at the budget and approving a levy, if you choose to, I mean, you'll be able to raise your levy by that 5%. But costs are likely to increase more than that. We'll see what happens. I hope, I hope this inflation is, is gonna come under control soon. I think everyone hopes that. But I just thought I'd throw that out there so that you're aware of your, the limitations in property tax revenue that you're able to receive in a, in a period of high inflation. This is the first time in the 30-year history of PTEL that that 5% cap has been implemented. You can see the history there. No, it's never even, you know, the highest year ever was, looks like 2007, where the Consumer Price Index went up about 4.1%. So anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there and happy to entertain any discussion about that.
Any questions for Kurt on this? I have at least one. Were you, you were around when this was passed, right? Well, 30 years ago, when it was passed. Of course, you were still probably in high school. But, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is I'm just curious how PTEL was promoted and what, what were the citizens told they were gonna get for this? Because it's always fascinating to me.
Sure, so prior to PTEL, tax revenues were limited by rates. There were maximum rates that were set either according to statute or based on referendums that were passed or whatever. So that a taxing district's property tax revenue could go up as fast as property values went up, okay? And it was during a period of time, Cook and the, and the Cowler Counties were experiencing pretty rapid, dramatic increases in property values. And taxing districts were grabbing all of that. And property tax bills were rising dramatically, rising every bit as fast as, as their values were. And, you know, the folks decided, okay, enough is enough. We gotta, we gotta have some way to limit this. They came up with the PTEL law. And again, it allows for an increase from one year to the next based on inflation and new property added to a district. And it was, you know, initially it was passed and applicable to Cook and the Cowler Counties and with provisions that any other county could adopt it via referendum. And Boone County did that in 1996. So, I mean, any, any, any measure, any law that's purported to limit what the government can get is gonna be popular, you know? Interestingly, I mean, and there's a map available on the Department of Revenue website. There have been counties that have never had a PTEL referendum. Ogle County is one of them. It's not a PTEL county. There have been counties that have actually rejected a PTEL referendum. They put it on the ballot and the voters said no. So it's kind of a, it's a checkerboard situation across the state. But most, most of the counties here in northern Illinois, with the exception of Ogle, are PTEL counties.
I think it's just a real confusing concept for taxpayers. It seems that way to me.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, I have, I've had people come into my office and saying, "The tax cap law says my tax bill can't go up more than 5%." You know?
That's my point.
Misconceptions abound, yeah.
I'm sure, I would speculate that when people voted for it, they thought it was going to cap their taxes, not the collective taxes of the county. Anyhow, any other question? Go ahead, Dave.
The, the Consumer Price Index for 7%. Is that a Chicago area or a Rockford area CPI?
National.
I believe it's a, it's a national number. And of course, there's more than one CPI. This is what they call the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. And the statute does refer to a specific index of the federal government, whether it's Department of, forget which department actually comes up with that number. But, yeah, it's a, it's a national number.
Okay, do we know, do you happen to know what the Rockford number, the Rockford area number? I assume Rockford has its own CPI as distinguished from Cook.
I have not seen any other data.
Okay.
I would imagine it's available. I've just never looked for it.
Okay, thank you.
I think sometimes, Dan, you include that in your report, right? Labor Department or Bureau of Labor Statistics?
I was just looking for, yeah, the state. I can see if I can find it. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's in there.
Okay, we'll find it though, Dave.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kurt, very much. All right, item seven. Oh, are you still around for this? Or no, we can do these on our own, right? Item number 7.1 is a.
If I could just interrupt real quick. Just let the record state that Board Member Wahlberg showed up at 6:05 PM. So he is in attendance.
I forgot. All right. I think what we did last time was in committee, we did the sale of surplus property altogether. But then at the county board meeting, we do them separately?
Yes, so we skipped over the administration.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna know why? I have the screen right here, but I'm looking at a piece of paper that splits it. I always have an excuse, kids.
I'll be quick.
Oh, take your time, dear.
So the, so this is for December of 2021. So this is for the first month of FY 2022. If you, if you look at the report, I want to be careful. It's just one month of data. So, you know, just, I don't want to be too, make too many assumptions about just one month. But I did want to just call out a couple of things on the major revenue sources. So on pages two and three, budgeted pretty hefty increases on like sales tax, income tax. And the data on these two pages actually represent December and January from the state. And these numbers, we're just really kind of blowing 2020, December 2020, out of the water. So for the first two months of last fiscal year, the three sales tax accounts alone, they were just over 557,000. For the first two months of the fiscal year, or 839,000, which is like 51% increase. So it's just really astounding, the increases that we continue to see in, in these major revenue sources. And so that's something that we'll continue to watch. Some of that does have to do with, we talked about that leveling the playing field.
Yep.
I think those, those year-over-year comparisons, they'll start to normalize in June of this year just because then we'll get more accurate, kind of year-over-year. Right now, it's really the old way of doing it compared to the new way. But still, even income tax, the local tax, all still doing really well. So I think it's good news as we start the new fiscal year that we seem to be continuing on a positive path. The only other thing that I wanted to quickly mention was, one of the attachments is that state report that they put out every month. And there's interesting charts in there just about showing the, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, talking about the number of jobs in Illinois and how you can see on that chart that how we're inching back towards pre-pandemic levels as far as employment. But we're still not quite there. That was an interesting, some interesting information. That's it.
Any questions for you, Dan? All right, thank you very much, Dan. Now we're ready to go to the three. Item 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3 are motions to approve Resolution 2209, sale of surplus property 0322151003. Resolution 2210 is a sale of surplus property 0322176001. And item 7.3 is a motion to approve Resolution 2211, sale of surplus property 0535176005 and 006. Motion to move this on to the county board.
Some moves?
Motion made by Ryan.
A second.
Second by Ray Larson. Any discussion on these? Dave Wiltse.
To the extent any of these properties are being purchased by Cantwick, and there are, I think, at least three of them, I will state that I am abstaining to avoid the appearance of impropriety and a possible conflict of interest since I'm on that board and we voted to acquire those two pieces of property.
Okay. Anything else? I just have a quick question for Kurt. Kurt, in the memos, the board agenda narrative memo, it says the $900 is the figure that we're getting. But we really, I can't find the rest of the money.
That $900, I think, error.
Okay.
We have actually, no, I think it's correct. There are three, because parcels are combined. The price paid was $797 each. Joe Meyer, our agent, gets $450. There's $47 for a recording fee. And the remaining $300 goes to the county collector. And that is for ultimately distribution to the taxing districts. So it's $300 per, per resolution, 900 total.
Oh, so you lumped them all together. Okay. One memo for all, got it. I got it now. Thank you very much, Kurt. Any other conversation? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstain. As to.
The records show Dave Wiltse abstains.
09 and 10, I believe are the two.
Okay, motion carries. Let's see, we're at the impact fee discussion and land cash fees payments. Is that Kevin?
Yes.
You or Dan?
I, I can take it. It's, are you guys gonna do the motion first? Or you want me to just, to discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve moving this on to the county board?
What exactly are we removing, Kurt?
Well, that's what I was trying to find out.
The payments for the months of January.
Let's go through it first. Can we go through it first and then we'll go back into the motion?
Yep, we can. So this item is to approve the distribution of payments that were collected, the impact fees payments that were collected during the months of January 2021 and February 2021. If you recall, impact fees, the board approved a moratorium for two years beginning March 1, 2021. So we collected impact fees for January and February of 2021. So that's what this is related to. The other reason why this item is presented tonight as a discussion because Board Member Bartelt asked for some information, just kind of some interim information on what would have been collected if impact fees were still being collected from March, December 2021. And so that was included in the packet. But we also included information detailing what property tax revenue would have been generated or that actually will be generated. So the supervisor assessments calculated a assessment on what those properties may, what we may collect in property tax revenue so that the board could see that, you know, although we didn't collect those impact fees, those taxing districts will still be receiving the, the increased property tax revenue. If you do recall too, the reason why the board voted to place a moratorium, we received feedback from all of the taxing districts, the, a lot of the community partners, such as the Realtors Association, et cetera. And a lot of them did not want to agree to a, to a complete abolition of the impact fees, rather they agreed to moratorium to sort of study what impact this would have. You know, obviously, no pun intended, over the course of the two years so they could see if, you know, what the benefit may be. You know, there's really no way for us to sort of predict whether or not placing the moratorium has had any sort of positive effect. We have seen an uptick in housing development. But is that due to the moratorium? I mean, there's no way for us to tell that. But also, the, the largest collector of the impact fee is a school district. And the school district 100 said that, you know, they were actually in favor of a complete abolition of the impact fee, but they disagreed to the two-year moratorium. And essentially, impact fees for someone like a school district is really to plan for increased capacity within their school system. They, you know, they basically have told us they have a lot of room in their facilities. They have, you know, their facilities are capable for taking on more, more students already. So I think that's why they were in favor of just a complete abolition. But however, anyway, they agreed to the two-year moratorium. So that's just kind of where we left it, but we wanted to provide that, those details tonight. But the actual item is, again, to also approve a motion to disperse those fees that were collected in January and February 2021.
Any questions? Carl?
Just to clarify, those fees that were collected and already were prior to the moratorium being set to put in place, correct? Yes. Okay.
Ryan, go ahead.
I mean, this looks like a positive result. I mean, in comparison to what the impact fees have read before is a sustainable tax. And I think when a school, you know, obviously uses an impact fee to develop or for room for growth in a school, this would benefit a school far better than a fee put on. And who knows? Like you said, we can't measure, obviously, the impact that makes to an area because you can't simply tell, ask someone like, hey, did you move here? Because there, or did you decide to hit Winnebago County? Because there isn't an impact fee or not. But as long as there's growth, I don't see anything bad. And for a school to agree to that, maybe they, they obviously see the big picture. And we want growth, we just don't want crazy growth. And I don't think we're getting that, so.
Other questions? Rodney?
Excuse me, I'll just say this because I was one of the opponents against this. And my thing is this, it's great that it, that it seems to be working out. My thing was that these entities, hopefully they won't be coming back at us looking for floating bonds, referendums, and things like that. My only concern at this point, obviously, is the Park District. I'm sure you guys have gotten information and realize they're looking at, they're taking surveys and stuff right now for a new aquatics center, which I have no issue with whatsoever. But whether these could have been used to help with that, I don't know. But just something to keep in mind. We, you know, this is a two-year issue. I, I understand that. And we'll be looking at it again when the, when the time has come and see how things go then. But I just wanted to put it out there that one of these days they're gonna be looking for money, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Are they getting more money though? With sustainable tax than they would the impact fee?
Well, yeah, I mean.
As of these numbers, they are.
Right.
Well, I, I would like to ask, and I think I'm probably the only one because it looks to me like what we're supposed to be approving is paying out to the Belvedere School District. to me like what we're supposed to be approving is paying out to the Belvedere School District $9,517.96, to the Park District $6,777.79, and $906.81 to the Boone County Conservation District. Did I get that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but I want to go back to something that was asked before. These were fees collected before the moratorium took place.
Yeah, so the moratorium took effect March 1st, 2021.
Right.
These were collected in January, February.
Okay, so this really has nothing to do with the moratorium right now?
Those, yeah, those don't.
Had nothing to do with the moratorium?
Right.
Just wanted to make sure. Then I see that Jessica's in the audience. The last, why won't it come up? The last chart here about estimated property taxes, impact fees discussion. I think this is a fascinating chart and when I, we go to, we are in a lot of record meetings. For those of you that are in a lot of record, we talk about what happens if some of these parcels that have heretofore not been developed, what happens when they're developed. And I thought about that as I was looking at this, but maybe I'm wrong. So would you mind, just for me, because I'm sure everybody else understands, just run through this and let, you know.
Well, excuse me, I'll preface this by saying there is a fair amount of conjecture in this chart.
Full disclosure, I love it, Jess.
Because you'll notice that the property tax rate in district remains the same, you know, because we know that rates are difficult to predict sometimes. But in 2020, a fair amount of the lot, a few, a few of the lots are, the assessment, you know, because some of these lots that are in subdivisions that are already platted and ready and waiting for, you know, a builder and an interested homeowner are being farmed. So, you know, just in the first parcel on the list, the 2020 assessment of that parcel was $185. Kurt may not have even sent them a tax bill because it costs too much to send them a tax bill. They essentially paid nothing because if the tax bill would calculate under $50, I don't think he even sends them a bill. So that's a plotted, a plotted, you know, subdivision lot that brings a no tax revenue. And so what happens in the course of a new construction, as soon as the permits are taken out, the lot is turned to a residential lot and receives a residential assessment. And so that's what you'll see in 2021 AV, three columns to the right on that top parcel is that lot is now being assessed as residential property. So it's $1,000 and, you know, and then the prorated, the third column or the three, six, seventh column over, eighth column over is the estimated 2022 assessment is, represents prorated value for a partial improvement because, you know, we, it's also difficult. Some houses, the houses are going up very quickly in this specific neighborhood, these two Creek Ridge and we're still calling it Arlen Crossing, but it's on the north side of Spring Creek Road there, which is same builder, Chris Reale, he builds very nice homes. The ones on the south side are a little nicer than the ones that's built on the north side.
This is west of the.
Yes. Yeah. Very nice homes being built on both the north side and the south side. And that's what's represented in here. There's two or three of those houses are on the Arlen Crossing on the south side of Spring Creek Road and some of those are on the north side. And then the last one represents, I think, one of the last lots in the Aberdeen Knoll subdivision.
Okay.
Because, you know, people are looking for places to build. That's, we're very optimistic about new construction moving forward.
Thank you. So, so I go back to my point about our lot of record discussions, you know, and I think this is instructive to some, anyhow. All right, so I'm going to go back. So we're looking for a motion to approve payments to the Belvedere, I'm sorry, hang on a minute, School District to the Park District and to the Conservation District.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made by Jonathan Van Mar, seconded by Ryan. Any other questions or discussion? Oh, Steve.
Yeah, I hope it's okay to mention this. Something you missed too is incentive this gives the builders to build also provides income to your building department.
Yep.
So there's a lot of win-win in this, I believe. So that's something as we mentioned, that brings $1,000 into your building department. So, thank you.
Any further questions? Dave?
Just a comment. I pulled the district 100 letter of November 18th, 2020, as well as Neely Erickson's summary memo of January 4th, 2021. I want to again state for the record and remind everybody that the Park District, the Conservation District, and all three school districts were in favor of this and that was their public stance.
All right. Any other conversation? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.5 is a motion to approve a policy amendment to the Animal Services Standard Operating Procedures Manual, Building Maintenance Fund Conversion. I'm looking for a motion to move this on to the county board.
I'm a.
Motion made by Bill Robertson, seconded by Steve Shabacher. Any questions on this? Kevin, you want to add some comments?
Yeah, I mean, I can just, just provide some clarity and Director Rick Bort is here tonight, but he's in the process of serving a search warrant right now, or excuse, a search warrant, so with the sheriff's office. So what this is all about is, you know, in 2013, when the new shelter was built and the bonds were being paid off, the county increased the collection for building and maintenance on the rabies license to $10 from $5. Well, when those bonds were paid off, it reduced back down to the $5 and none, regardless, what happened is, is that that fund has just been increasing at a sort of a significant amount each year. And building a maintenance fund has been traditionally used just for like the routine building and maintenance, for lack of a better term. What we found is that, you know, they, you know, they have vehicles and they have other needs that they could benefit from the use of that fund. And so Rick has requested that that just be reflected in the operating procedures manual so that they could use it to purchase other equipment such as vehicles, other improvements to the facility made that may be needed in addition to its traditional use that it's been used for. So that's, that's all we wanted to provide this evening.
Any questions for Kevin?
So they're raising the fee $5?
No, no, no. The fee will still stay the same. So the rabies license, they, each license that's sold, they collect $5. Before it was $10 and that, and that additional $5 went to pay for those bonds that were used to construct that facility. Those have dropped off, I believe, in 2016 or something like that. So they've already paid for the bond, so it's, it's still $5. So they're not raising it. They just want to change the purpose of the fund to be expanded to include additional things such as purchasing vehicles and other items like that, other equipment.
Tom, I think what they did was they increased it $5. Now they're just taking, lopping that because it was 10 bucks so that, you know, they don't need the money anymore. So it's now going back to $5. I know it's.
I was asking for clarification. Yeah, because the first time I read through it, it looked like it was.
I agree. Yep. Well, and seeing as how there's so many things they're going to have to fix in that building. Oh, did I say that? Any other conversation or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, we are to item 7.6, a motion to approve an increase in capital improvement expense in the Assessment GIs Office. Looking for a motion to move that. Bill Robertson voted to move that on to the county board. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ray Larson. Any conversations, questions? Jessica's here and so is Tammy. Any questions for them? Carl, you first.
Just, just a comment for anybody that is concerned about it. It is an increase in, in their, in this project for them, but it's just really strictly due to the economic times we live in these days. I can tell you as somebody that sells things for a living, if you quoted something in June or July of last year, you're not even close at this time. It's at least double, if not more, in many instances. So unfortunately, you know, we, our department heads and elected officials do a great job in getting multiple bids and trying to get the low price and do that. But when we do a budget, we, we have to be smart enough too to make sure we pad that. This slipped through the cracks. So unfortunately, we all kind of missed the boat a little bit on that. So it's going to cost a little more to do it. Things that need to be done. One thing I did want to bring up, talking with Jessica, there's an option when they're redoing their carpet, instead of doing the whole just rolled carpet like normal, to do the carpet squares, it would add about another, I think, $1,800, is that correct, Jessica, to that? But the advantage of doing the large carpet squares is that if something spills, one gets worn or some get worn, you can replace those a whole lot easier than just ripping out all the carpet. So it saves a considerable amount in the future. So I would recommend that we allow for that additional 1,800 or so. And if Mr. Catalin, I don't know if you know or Jessica, you know, if we need to maybe even do an, you know, amount not to exceed so that we, we make sure she's got enough in there to get done what needs to be done.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up real quick, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's in the modified request. I don't.
I guess I could bring it up here.
Yeah, let me see.
So the, the total current ask is 21,000. I guess I might say let's, do we want to throw that at 25,000, an amount not to exceed 25,000?
No, that's.
We could whip out a calculator here real fast because it's, the new quote is 17,327.
Plus paint, plus paint and then 21, 21,327 is the.
That's right, and then you got to add the 1,800.
Add another 2 grand, that's 23.
Yeah, let's just say.
So if we want 25 not to exceed, that would, then we know we're, we're getting done. So.
Okay, I think Jonathan and then Steve.
Yeah, so do I understand this correctly that in the budget, we had 13,7 put down in the budget and now we're looking at spending double that at, just about double that at 25? So then where's this extra 12 going to come from?
So we were proposing utilizing, the GIs Office is in there as well, so they have a considerable fund balance actually. And so we were considering just utilizing their fund balance and Tammy's comfortable with that and we're pretty comfortable with that. They, I think that fund balance is around, well, actually we could check because Kurt 's in his report, but I think it's almost probably 300,000.
Yeah, I think it is too.
It's pretty high, yeah.
Okay. And then just last question, they're talking here about vinyl. Are we going to go with the carpet or?
Jess or Tammy, come back.
So, you haven't been in the assessment office maybe yet, so maybe after the meeting you can come take a walk and look. There's a, there's a break room that's carpeted, it's like a kitchen really. And there's some considerable staining on that floor and the flooring provider recommended that we don't put carpet back in the break room. And then you'll notice on the amended, one of the things that added to the additional cost was that the back door of our office faces east. So when the rain hammers us, which it occasionally does, water pours under the door. And after speaking with Ted Celia, our maintenance person, he said, well, you guys are talking about getting new flooring, maybe your flooring contractor would fix the door threshold so that the water would stop. And so that's, you know, and it was a big industrial door and it's, I guess it's quite involved fixing that so that it doesn't, he says he's going to make it as watertight as possible, but the back stoop is pitched in an odd way. So he's going to do the best he can. And so there, that's one of the things was fixing this threshold that added to the cost and then changing to a commercial vinyl product for the kitchen and by that door that may or may not be watertight when we're done.
Other questions? Dave? I'm sorry, Steve.
Let's get, let's recognize first.
Dave, Steve, go ahead.
I just want to echo what the chairman said. I agree with him. One of the things, is there any, are we going to have a few extra squares if we go that way of carpeting? You know, you know, we have a bid to decarpet, but is in there, is there like another six or eight or 10 that we could use to replace if some damage goes to those ones there? I don't know if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I don't, I think we could if there's enough funds in there.
I haven't specifically asked the flooring contractor if that would be included, but I can make sure, I can find that out. All of the businesses that we are using are all local.
Another thing, on that door, it's possible it has a rubber grommet that slips out that, and I don't know if this does, but in a lot of cases we had that steel door, they have like a rubber grommet that you can pull and replace a rubber grommet. So maybe, I don't know. I haven't seen that.
The other one's a little leaky too, if you want to take a look. It was a little drafty back there.
Thank you.
Dave?
Actually, the first thing Steve was just talking about was that, I was going to mention, I mean, the squares make a lot of sense, but colors change, the runs stop, they change what they're going to produce. So yes, having a supply of squares on hand makes a lot of sense to me. I understand on the first one, which is a larger one, you know, that went from June and then, and then there was another bid. Second one is, you know, goes from $2,000 to $4,000 in like 20 days.
Yeah.
From December 6th to December 26th. And I have a, I have a problem with that, you know, and I don't want to cast any aspersions or say something that I don't have any facts for, but we've all learned in the last two years how COVID gets blamed for everything and now the supply chain kind of gets blamed for everything. And I just don't see the reason that this would jump by, would double in 20 days.
To your point specifically, Dave, are you talking about the paint went from 2,000 to 4,000?
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the third and fourth one with the painting proposal and repairing wall damage and so forth.
I didn't see the dates, I'm sorry.
Yes, December 6th is the date of the first one of 2021 and the second one is December 26th of 2021.
Two handwritten ones.
Although it says date of plans, oh, it doesn't, yeah.
I, I guess I can address.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So we're obligated to utilize contractors and, and, you know, anyone that's, that's completing a public, what the state calls a public works project, and this would be qualified as that they have to pay prevailing wage. And so when we communicated that to the contractor, that's why we saw the, the price increase because although we are not, the state doesn't require us to actually collect certified copies of their payroll, however, if they're audited by the state, they have to basically show that they paid prevailing wage. And once we communicated that, that's why the, the price increase went into effect, so.
Dave?
Well, I guess I would have a question then. Were there other proposals on this aspect and did those bid with prevailing wage and?
Yes, and actually they were considerably higher, I think. I don't know if Jessica has them or so, but they were.
That's okay, if you could tell me that they were, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, go ahead.
If you could tell me that it's still cheaper than the other ones, then I get it and, okay. Okay, thank you.
These are local people?
Local, yeah.
Belvedere.
Any other? Carl?
I would just go ahead and amend the motion on the floor to make the amount not to exceed $25,000.
I'm looking for a, all right. Bill, amendment, motion made to amend the motion to not exceed $25,000, seconded by Bill. I tallied it up, it's 23,177.20. So, you know, I'm not even sure 25 is enough if they're going to fix those doors.
That's included.
It does include, but they might find things they don't know yet. But anyhow, it should work. It should work, 25,000. Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment of the motion?
I second the amendment if no one has.
Ms. Robertson already did.
Bill already did it. All right, all in favor of amending the motion to say the amount is not to exceed $25,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we need to pass the motion to move this on to the county board for approval. Motion made by Ryan Curry.
Already.
Seconded by Bill.
The motion was already on the floor. Because I amended that motion.
All right.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One more time, come on. Come on.
We need to go by way too fast.
Yeah.
There you go.
Way over my pay grade.
I lose power now and have to stay here. Executive session. The doors won't open and will be locked in.
All right, let's see. My only one last question is who gets to pick out the paint color and the carpet color?
Fuchsia. I vote for fuchsia.
I don't think you get a vote.
God dang it.
I don't think you get a vote.
Get shag carpet squares?
Orange, orange, burnt orange.
You got to mow it.
Oh, God, my, I had a house once and, okay. All right, we're out of control, kids. Item 8, Intergovernmental Reports and Updates. We don't want Tom to think we're always this bad. Actually, sometimes we're worse. Anyhow, only when I'm in charge. Nine informational items. There is a letter out there from Silverhorn Extension Request. Anything else out there we need to know about Kevin or Dan?
Nothing this evening, other than that, yeah.
And we have no executive session needed?
Nope.
Guess what, kids?
I make that motion?
Wait, do we have, oh, wait, did we, do we do board comments? Board member comments here? No. Yeah, we do. I'm sorry. Skip over board member comments. Go ahead, Rodney.
Yeah, just wanted.
Hoping you were going to say I moved to adjourn.
Well, I'd, I'd love to, but just give me a couple more minutes.
You can have all the time you want.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to be here all night. Mr. Chairman, I briefly had a quick discussion before the meeting started, and I just wanted to kind of bring this up because whatever, what we were talking about was the, the Circuit Clerk appointment. My question is, I guess, is are we, I know you said that they're the new, the chief, the old chief judge and the new chief judge are discussing. Do you have any idea where we are as far as the timeframe goes? Because if I recall, the resolution that we did back in November was 60 days. That's, that's, that's approaching us. So I'm just kind of curious as to what, what have you been?
The, the chief judge and the, the current chief judge, Judge Lowry, is going to discuss with the former chief judge, Judge Doherty. That's all a mouthful. Just regarding how hard and fast that 60 days is because of the interim pro temp of, of putting that person in there. I know that my discussions with Judge Doherty prior were that that allowed for some leeway because of that interim pro temp, that they may discuss that and decide that that's not the case. So he's supposed to get back to me hopefully this weekend or otherwise very early next week. And then I'll have more information. I can't tell you what he's going to say for sure. But we had a, a nice lengthy discussion about the, the options that we have there, and he wanted to just get himself a little more up to speed on some things that he wasn't 100% sure on, so.
So, but we're just discussing within the issue of possibly extending the 30, or the 60. Are they, are they going to be involved in the process of selection?
We've also discussed, I, I've, I've discussed with our state's attorney, I've discussed with Judge Lowry. Both, just some ideas that, that, that I'm, that going through my head, and they brought up some options also that I wasn't thinking of that we've been discussing. So we're working through some, trying to find the best person we can for, for the scenario we have.
Yeah, I know, because I know we've gotten our, the email.
The fault is it's an elected position. So to be honest, anybody that, you know, sits on a street corner or, you know, whatever can decide, I want to run and, run and win. Really have, regardless whether we think that that's a really super important position or not, anybody can run for it and win.
Absolutely.
In any way, for it or not.
At this point, it's, it's our decision.
And that's, and that's, and that's what we're, that's what we're looking to do is to, to make sure we, we put a good qualified there for, for this time being, and then let the people figure it out from there.
Sure, yeah. And like I said, we got those, the resumes out, and I hope everybody's had a chance to look at those. I would recommend highly looking at them all very closely. And just, I don't know if anybody noticed, the WIFR just put a report out yesterday. Stevenson County is kind of going through the same thing. One of the things that I'm extremely impressed with is that they put a team of professionals or, well, what they consider to professional, ask for finding the next Stevenson County clerk. And the selection board includes State Representative Andrew Chesney, which I understand is also the party chairman there, an attorney, David Shaki, attorney Carla Nieman, and Stevenson County Board Member Mark Diggins, and Stevenson County Sheriff's Chief Deputy Steve Stovall. So, I mean, they put together, you know, it looks like they put together a group of, you know, well-versed people that could really put a good light on who would be the best candidate. I, I wish maybe we had been able to do something like that, but just wanting to keep up on the process, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Dave?
Two things. One is, I, I noticed that in the correspondence, there's this letter from Forefront, and I had made an indication at the last meeting, I was going to be looking to move the other vendor, I think it was Cypress, on the solar thing that had been turned down. And I, I think it would be appropriate to have all three of those set up for a motion to reconsider, which I understand according to the rule is going to be the month after that, but I don't want to miss any of those. I would, it's my, my, my thought, we have all three of them brought back. Now I have two letters from two of the vendors. And that's my thought. The other thing is, my reading of this Omicron variants, and I actually mean reading, when I'm looking at stuff, it's seven times more contagious than the original variant. And we may need to think about going back to Zoom or some other kind of meeting if, if that's, I don't know if the governor has to make another edict or, but we, we may need to consider that.
Jonathan?
I guess I just had a question of how does Robert's rules work with reconsidering these solar projects, special uses? I know we needed an opposing side to motion it back. Do we need a second from the opposing side?
I, I don't believe, I think anybody can second the motion as I understand it, as I recall. So the way it would work is someone who voted on the, I'm going to say winning side of the motion can vote and can ask for the motion to, to be reconsidered. And then it gets seconded, voted on. If it's voted to yes, let's reconsider it, then it stops there at that meeting, and then it would be pushed to the very next full board meeting for discussion and purview and voting there at, at that time. So, thank you.
Brian?
Just bringing up kind of what Dave said about Zoom. I hate Zoom, but I know right now, I believe it was passed, that you have to be sick or...
Yeah, our county ordinance says you can, out of town for work, sick or, you know, illness of a, a close relative or something like that, to be able to attend remotely. And that's with a 24-hour notice or 48?
It's 24 hours, yes.
24-hour notice. The, the governor thing and perhaps the state's attorney, so we can ask for clarification with the state's attorney's office. They don't have to weigh in tonight, but we can ask for clarification from them. But it was my understanding that the governor removed that, I'm going to call it exemption or edict or whatever it was, the order that he had that would allow for meetings like this to be done completely through Zoom. He removed that, so therefore then we, we can't just hold our meetings through Zoom. But I'll ask, I'll ask the state's attorney's office to just go through that and clarify that.
I was more so saying if somebody didn't feel safe and they wanted to Zoom, they didn't have a sick family member, what would it take for, say, Dave, if he wanted to, stay home? Is that even, is that, is there something that we can change? I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if someone did.
Let me, let me, let's see, the, the one thing we want to be careful is that we don't turn the, we don't turn it into everybody just says, I just want to stay home. From now until eternity. So let me talk to the state's attorney's office and see if, if perhaps we can do it through a, a short period of time here, if people are uncomfortable or something like that. But I, I want to make sure we're doing it legally, so for our ordinances and things like that. So I'll, I'll touch base with Tricia's office.
I mean, I'd like the option to be here. I'd rather be here.
Yeah. You, you just want to be at the beach, I know.
I want to be, yeah, sure. No, no, I want to be here. I'd, I'd rather be here.
My situation is quite unfortunate. My sister is a disabled Army vet that lives with me, and she would, they believe she has an infection in her shoulder. It will be the fifth surgery in 16 months.
It's, you know, I.
Same shoulder.
Mr. Wilson, I, I think that in that kind of instance, I, I mean, you could certainly say that you need to be home.
I'm more concerned about bringing the Omicron into the house.
That's what I mean. You could be home due to, to illness of, of a close family member that you're caring for.